This is a test, testing one, two, three, just a test only.
This is a test, testing one, two, three, just a test only.
Open the council meeting. I would also like to remind everybody in accordance with the council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being live streamed. And if you are not talking, could you please turn off your microphone? Excuse me. The acknowledgement of the country and prayer of council and affirmation will be read by Chief Executive Officer Dr Eddy Jackson. You're on mute, Eddy. You're on mute.
My apologies. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. Acknowledgement of country. To begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Cabo Goo clan of the Daragh nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawal and Daragh nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you. Do we have any apologies? No apologies, thank you. Do we have any condolences? The minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of November.
Move confirmation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I've got one slight amendment.
Moved by councillor Sheldon and amendment by councillor Hagerty. Yes, councillor Hagerty.
Now I'm looking everywhere trying to find... Page 13 of the book. There's a reference to... Alright, I've found it. Councillor Acheedi declared a non-procurnary, blah, blah, blah. The reason councillor Hagerty knows a nominee. I think that should read councillor Acheedi personally knows a nominee. The first one.
Thank you. So with that amendment, are you happy to second it?
Ah, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty. I'll put it, those in favour, those get carried. Declarations of interest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, in relation to item conf 02. A long time in the past, I think I've had business dealings with one of the parties involved, and I know several of them anyway. I'm going to call it non-procurnary, non-significant, and I don't intend to leave the room. For a long time in the past, I believe. Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you. The same for me, Madam Mayor. COM FO2, the Tourism and CBD Committee, new community representatives. Non-procurnary, less than significant, as I know people that have been nominated. I know those people in the course of community engagements. And I will stay in the room and I will be participating in the voting.
Thank you very much, councillor. Any others?
Yes, Mayor, sorry.
Councillor Acheedi?
I have two, Mayor. First one is com 02. Non-procurnary, less than significant. I'm a foundation member of the club. And the other one is com 02. Some of the nominees are known to me in my capacity as a councillor.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, they're both the same, same as councillor Acheedi. I'm a foundation member of the club and I know, so yeah, I know some of these people in my capacity as a councillor.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Mayor, I would also like to declare an interest in com 02 as I serve on a board with one of the community representatives in the course of my duties as a councillor.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare one too, the same as everyone else.
I know some of these people, non-significant. Non-significant.
Thank you councillor Blute, any others?
Madam Mayor, sorry, have I missed something? My daughter was crying, so I missed all of that.
We're just doing any interests, declarations of interest.
Okay, my nom actually refers to my, so do I have to, not my nom, sorry, it's a question with notice. So my husband is mentioned in that, do I have to declare an interest in that because it's a question of notice?
It's your decision councillor, I'm not trying to be difficult. You have to make up your own decision whether you think people would see it as being unethical or difficult or whatever, so you have to make your own mind up.
Okay, I won't be declaring an interest in that to my question. Thank you Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, any other declarations? None? Thank you very much councillors. Next item is public forum, and we don't have any items on the agenda, and we have no representations on the agenda. We don't have a mayoral minute, so the next item on the agenda is found on page 78.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay councillor, what are your questions?
Is it me or councillor?
Councillor Rhodes, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Now, thank council very much for the report and all the information. I believe the professors cited in the report were also involved in a study project based on a similar proposal in Queensland, where the statistical outcomes were measured through a funding programme, fortunately from their state government and I think it might have been a university, either there or in Sydney. Now, while this project, will we be able to have the same statistical outcomes measured in the recommendation of this motion in a similar way?
I'll ask the council staff through the CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor, Mr Smith?
Thank you, through the acting CEO, Miss Mardini, are you able to comment on that please?
We can take it on notice.
That's right. Miss Mardini, are you there?
Well, while we're filing, have it?
I'll take it on notice.
We'll take that on notice councillor.
And perhaps the next question. The way that I read it, with all the figures and information of how many cats we've got in the Liverpool LGA, and approximating how many cats would be de-sexed at each de-sexing programme, which I think was 500, I'm not sure if I read that correct. But 2,000 cats anyway, in one given year, you know, if the cats weren't increasing all the time, it would take us 10 years to get on top of this matter. But disregarding that, the real possibility of getting on this, on top of this situation, would only be achievable over time if we were de-sexing more cats than their population growth in the LGA. So my question was, can we find out how many cats would have to be de-sexed in order to decrease the number of cats? And that can be taken on notice?
I think that should be taken on notice. Thank you very much councillor Rhodes. Councillor Caliander, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you Madam Mayor. I'd also like to thank the staff for their really comprehensive report and the information provided. I just wanted to ask, and again, this can be taken on notice, if you have some figures around the costs associated with implementing the recommendations, whether there's sort of an outline of what the cost to council could be, both financially and otherwise, of not taking any action?
Through the acting CEO, certainly happy to take that information on notice councillor. I do recall that there was some information that was circulated to councillors yesterday in relation to that matter, but I'm happy to circulate that again to councillors.
Madam Mayor, as this is just-
Hold on councillor Rhodes, councillor Rhodes, you haven't got the call. It's councillor Caliander, and then there'll be councillor Hagerty, and then it'll be you. So councillor Caliander, have you finished?
Yes, I have, thank you Madam.
Thank you councillor Hagerty?
Thank you Madam Mayor, just a couple of questions and comments. Page two of this plan, I'm going to confuse everyone now with the page numbers, which is page 83 of this, of the minute. The plan, basically what it's describing, the three dot points around the plan, so de-sexing, education and containment, identification and registration. That's fine if the cats are, I guess, owned by someone, but what if they're quote unquote uncontrolled cats or feral cats? Going to be, how do you, how do you de-sex them? How do you educate them if they don't have owners? And how do you identify them for registration? So there's a bit of a, just, there's a bit of a gap in this plan, I think.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a response from council staff on that question?
Miss Mardini?
I think we'll take that on notice.
I'll answer that through the CEO.
Yep.
This is a draft plan. What we intend to do is submit the draft plan for review to the Companion Animals Advisory Committee, once it's established early in the new year. Obviously, how we deal with feral cats is quite a difficult situation. This is, you know, particularly focused on domestic cats, but we acknowledge that that's a significant issue. And the reason we're asking for endorsement of the draft, can continue those discussions with both community members and experts in the field through the committee as well, to report back a final plan to council early in the new year.
There's also a question about, I think it's 30%, I can't find it at the moment, but basically a significant number of tags have the wrong contact details and address details, 37% have the wrong details, that's page 89, page eight of the report. Do we have a plan to address that, or are there privacy issues around, I guess, finding out where these people have moved to and even say, come and get your cat?
Through the-
I'll ask them. Yeah.
Yeah, through the CEO, thank you. Absolutely, so the, part of the action plan, it's a communications campaign as well to inform people that if you move properties, to update your details. So there's an element that people move from property to property and don't realise that they need to update the pet register. So there's an element of a communications campaign and education to the community that we intend to roll out in the new year.
Okay. And just one last one, there's references to the RSPCA in there. Is there a reason we aren't or don't work with the Animal Welfare League? Do they not look after cats or fake cats?
Through the CEO?
Mr Smith?
We can certainly, through the CEO, we can certainly look at including that in the, in the plan. We do work with a range of animal welfare organisations, so if we need to reference those associations, we can certainly do so.
Okay. And given this is a draft, if we have any other ideas, suggestions, we can feed them through to you in the, yeah, yeah, appropriate. All right, thank you, that's it for me.
Councillor Rhodes, you're next.
Madam Mayor, we can see that there are a number of questions that we have got, which really will only be addressed by the Companion Animals Advisory Committee when it is formed. I'm happy to move this motion on the basis that it is endorsing the draft urban plan management plan in principle, and action plan in principle, for further consultation and advice from the Companion Animals Advisory Committee. And further reports with all of those questions asked, answered, brought back to the council.
I'll speak on that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sent by councillor Caliander. Councillor Hachidi, you have something you want to say?
Yeah Mayor, thank you. I'll speak against this plan, based on the response from the council offices the other day. I just can't see how we can justify spending a hundred and eighty-five odd thousand dollars on this plan, given that it's only costing us currently, or in 2019, it cost council $33,000. And seems like we've got it under control prior to 2015, and this is according to the response, before we started following the Companion Animals Legislation Act. Yes, we took a lot of cats and they were surrendered cats. Now we don't take them anymore. All of a sudden, now we're going to spend $185,000 on a problem, which I don't think we have. This, the response is this year, 11 cats have been impounded, which has cost council $11,000. And that was up until the animal shelter was closed, and Rossmore Vet has been instructed not to accept surrendered cats. So if there's a programme in place at the moment, we're spending seven odd thousand dollars on de-sex, on microchipping and some de-sexing subsidies. So there's a plan in place at the moment, which costs us a hell of a lot less, yet we want to reinvent the wheel and do something where something is currently working. Hence, I'll be speaking against or voting against it.
Well, you've just spoken against it as well, so thank you councillor. Have we got any speakers for the motion, please? Not councillor Rhodes.
For it?
Councillor Hagerty?
I've taken on board councillor Hachidi's comments, but, you know, because, because we're spending less on it, doesn't, doesn't make the problem go away. What's effectively happened is, you know, the cats don't disappear, they still exist. They're still being fed, they're still rummaging through people's bins, they're still, you know, attacking native wildlife, they're still attacking people's pets. So the problem is still there. So while we've solved the problem of how many turn up to our facilities and how much across the rate they are, we haven't dealt with the problem that that has created, which is, you know, there are still cats out there. So this, this additional funding and this additional programme will deal with the cats. The cats are still there.
Thank you, that's the speaker for. Do we have any other speakers against, besides councillor Hachidi? Do you want to write a reply councillor Rhodes?
Yes, if I may, Madam Mayor. I note councillor Hachidi's concerns, there's lots of concerns regarding the information that has been provided to us, and we certainly provided lots of questions back that need to be answered and addressed in this urban cat management plan and action plan. And the fact that it's going back to the Companion Animals Advisory Committee, and we're going to receive a further report on it, where then we will decide whether we will adopt it or not, I see nothing wrong with this particular motion. But on the de-sexing, as I pointed out, I think we can de-sex 2,000 cats, which is twice as many as we de-sexed previously through the programmes run at council. If this was adopted for the $40,000 to be spent on de-sexing. And we've been told by this report, there's approximately 60,000 cats in the Liverpool area. Of course, some of those would already be de-sexed, and it doesn't address the problem of how we are ever going to convince people to bring cats in, in what de-sexing plans that might be put forward through this cat management plan. There's, there's a mountain of other questions. One being, not the least of, who's on the Companion Animals Advisory Committee? We haven't even been advised of that. And I, as a councillor, would like to be on that committee. The recommendation needs to go forward so that all these questions and issues can be addressed, and then it gets brought back to council, and council then has the opportunity to decide whether they want to endorse the plan and the management and action plan. So on that basis, I'm quite happy for this to go forward, because obviously there are a lot of questions and concerns from councillors, and this is the best way of having those questions and answers delivered.
Thank you councillor, I'll put it to a vote. I think we might do, who's against the motion? Those hands that are up, are they still up for a reason? Thank you. So those that are against, please put your hand up, that might be easier. So councillor Hachidi, councillor Blute, I'm just going through. So two against, I declare it carried. Next item is on enforcement policy review on page 99.
Madam Mayor, I'm against as well.
That's three of you, still got the numbers, carry it.
Madam Mayor, I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you, the numbers still carry it, thank you. Next item, I'm sorry, your name's showing up on my list for some reason, I apologise councillors. I'll use the sheet in a sec, sorry. So the next item's on page 99.
Madam Mayor, I have got, I'd like to make some alterations to the policy consideration.
What is your amendment councillor? What is your motion?
Well, the motion would be as per the book with a couple of others added in, that we receive and note this report, and approve with the amendments, which I'm yet to tell you. And that we carry out an external audit of the council's compliance to address risks and processes, and report back to the June council meeting, to better enable councillors' assessment of the effectiveness of the enforcement policy.
So the type has said all that? Right, okay, thank you. We've got a second for that motion?
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Before we go through with the second, did Mr Smith want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the CEO. Whilst this is a matter for council, I would just like to draw the councillors' attention to the fact that it is no longer an enforcement policy, it is an enforcement standard. In accordance with council's adopted policy drafting standard, this report has been brought back to council from a previous resolution. However, as part of that review of the policy, it was determined to be a standard, and standards are approved by the CEO, so therefore the policy is revoked. But this was brought forward for the councillors' information, and the recommendation was to receive and note the report.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Well, given that information, I think I would have to ask, this particular recommendation be adopted because it is a standard and not a policy any longer. So it's receive and note, so it's a different situation councillor Rhodes and councillor Hall, to what I think we both-
Not moving the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Can I assist?
Yes, go ahead.
What about, receives and notes the report, refers, refers the standard to the, to ARIK? To address risk, blah 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 blah. So from where it says to address risk in councillor Rhodes bit, just everything from the, yes, yep.
Mr Smith, is that in keeping with the standard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the CEO. I don't believe that causes any issues, but I'll be guided by the CEO and the Director of City Corporate in relation to the ARIK committee.
Madam Mayor.
Well, it's not much different from the motion that I had before.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, shush, go ahead please, go.
Madam Mayor, I would like to seek clarification in regard to the function, whether that's consistent with the function of the ARIK committee, from Mr Hampurus.
Thank you, through the CEO, no problems at all. At the end of the day, the ARIK look at improvement, risk, efficiency, and if we package the, the report to actually benchmark that against our policy and our current policy position, I think it's got a place for the ARIK to provide some advisory on.
I'm happy to now-
So, I, as a chair, I just want to ask for some clarification, is the current amendment or current move, motion is moved by councillor Rhodes, which hasn't got a mover and a second at the moment, is that in order with this being a standard?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know. Thank you very much. Is there any speakers for this or against? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, clear it carried. Next item's on page-
You can record me as voting against, thanks.
Okay, thank you, councillor Shelton. Next item's on page 101. I'll move that as per the book, Madam Mayor. Second to councillor Haggerty. Thank you, deputy mayor. Any opposition?
Can I just ask a question, Madam Mayor? Is there?
Yes, what is?
Is there any community representative on that committee?
Through the CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would draw the councillor's attention to, we have a number of, uh, not-for-profit organisations. Um, training organisations, we also have Liverpool neighbourhood connections. Um, and I would point out that all of those bodies are deeply, uh, involved and in contact with communities through their day-to-day work, um, albeit informal or statutory body agencies.
And. Thank you.
One further question, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
When recommending, uh, endorse the membership applications from the agencies below, who attends the meeting? From those organisations?
A representative from the agencies.
So it could be a different person each time?
Well, having actually attended these for some time, yes, that is the case quite often.
And it doesn't create any issues or problems?
No, I, I haven't seen it as such. Because they take the information back to the organisation and they also bring the information from that organisation to that forum.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have a move and a second. Have we got any opposition? I'll put it, those in favor, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page 104.
Like to move a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, certainly councillor.
Um, so it would be, one, that council placed option one package for sponsorship of the Macarthur FC A-League team on public exhibition for 28 days.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just waiting for the typist.
Yep.
Um, so that comes with option one, public exhibition for, yep, 28 days. And then number two is that the sponsorship package one be finalized subject to a letter of support from Macarthur FC A-League team for a stadium in the Liverpool LGA.
Okay.
I'd, I'd be happy to second, Mayor, if councillor Ayad.
Oh, sorry, Madam.
Doesn't say option one.
I've made a mistake. Sorry, it says option one package. Sorry. So not zero dollars. It's supposed to be the $25,000 package on page 105, option one package, it says. So it's supposed to be.
I thought that was intended.
Yeah, it's supposed to be option one.
So 28 days and support letter. Thank you. Second about councillor Haggerty.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any opposition?
I'll speak in opposition, only because I think option three is the better.
Just hold your horses. Um, councillor, did you wish to speak to your motion at this pool?
Uh, I do, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry, just pardon me, I'm just rereading that just to make sure that's what I intend. Page 105. Okay, so I'm a little bit confused. The typist has got the, I wanted the $25,000 package, option one package, on page 105 of the agenda. Um, and then that the sponsorship package be finalized subject to a letter of support from Macarthur FC for a stadium in the Liverpool LGA.
And with the, through the mess, through the mayor, I wonder if, um, it would be worthy, including in that particular motion, uh, that includes them to play games.
Yes.
Ability in the Liverpool LGA. So it's a lot to be negotiated.
Well, that, that's the whole intention. And I do believe, um, through the chair, if I may, I do believe if we do have a stadium, that they would come along and play. Um, because I mean, even in the, um, report before us on page 104, they've stated that their territory includes the Liverpool LGA. Um, council has, have been long-time supporters of Macarthur FC. The gentleman there and the gentleman on the board and the leaders of that group do an amazing job. Um, and I think Liverpool City Council would be at a loss if we didn't receive a letter of support from them. Um, basically, this letter of support can be used in future bids for a stadium in Liverpool. After all, it is their territory. It's also our rate payer's money and we also deserve a stadium. And we deserve to host games and for a team to come along and for kids in our district to go and watch these games, watch training sessions and also be part of Macarthur FC. So I call on all my fellow councillors to support this. Um, I am open to changes in the motion. Now, the reason I did go for option one package is just now under the current circumstances and our financial situation, I would prefer to stick to the $25,000. Um, but I am open to changes or if other fellow councillors would like to add, um, add anything. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Hagerty, you indicated you wish to speak against?
Um, yeah, only as an opportunity to take up councillor, uh, Ayad's offer of, um, you know, throwing some additional options in there. Um, I, the option three would be my, so happy with the 25, but my, my, and happy with the thing about a stadium, it's wonderful to have a stadium. We are, you know, uh, Sydney's third CBD, we should have a, a stadium and, and sports facilities that reflect that. So completely supportive of that. Um, I thought, I think option three is probably the better go for us. Um, the, the, the option two, which is basically a standard package. Um, you know, here, you know, here's the list of what you've got and you, you get what you're given. Um, I think option three would be much better where our, uh, community team, um, and maybe even some of our other departments can actually, you know, go, go to the Macarthur Bulls and say, you know, here are some, here are some areas of need. Um, here are some, here are some projects we're working on. Would you want to support that instead? So, uh, you know, I'm not sure if we need what's being on offered there. So in my, my understanding is that the Macarthur Bulls, uh, pref- uh, pref- uh, prefer that option as well, that they'd be happy to sit down and work with council and do something tailored based on what, where the need is in Liverpool. So 25k, but option three, where we work out something that's more, um, tailored to what Liverpool's after.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify? You mean option three on page 105?
Options, as in identify the amount of sponsorship, allocate funds, instruct staff to negotiate a tailored sponsorship package.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned with that because it doesn't have a monetary value. And with our current, um, financial situation at council, I'm really not comfortable leaving it open.
Which we say.
I'd prefer for there to, there to be a monetary value. Now, with that information, Madam Mayor.
Can I, can I just stop you councillor? I'm being very kind here. We've actually got the rules of debate. You've had your turn councillor Hagerty's had his turn. Hold your thoughts for your reply. Have we got anybody else that wishes to speak for the motion?
May I question, if I may?
Certainly.
Can we, uh, question through the CEO, I take it to Miss Bono? Um, just get an update on these negotiations and what other packages you think are available through the Macarthur Bulls?
Yep. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would refer councillors to page 110 and 11, where, uh, the, the recommendations are set out there in regard to monetary value, um, of the third option as well. Um, I'll ask Mrs. Bono.
Uh, thank, thank you, um, through the CEO, the, the, as Eddie identified, um, our CEO identified, page 101, uh, 111 has the, um, allows the councillors to provide a monetary value. Um, and then we can negotiate with, with, uh, Macarthur FC on, on, um, a proposed way forward. Uh, we, we could align it better to our strategic outcomes of council and if, and, and also the strategic alignment to city, community and culture outcomes and our rec- in recreation and sport. So I provided that flexibility in the report to allow councillors, um, the opportunity to, for us to, to start those conversations. We've had some conversations with, with Macarthur FC. Um, but without, um, further endorsement from our councillors, I haven't engaged in, on any commitments. There'd just been, um, conversations at this point.
So sorry, through you again, Mayor, if I may, to Miss Bono. Um, are we better off than just endorsing a monetary value and not the actual option? And then leaving it to yourself and your team to negotiate on what's best?
That, that would be a preferred, a, a preferred way forward.
All right, so councillors negotiate a value.
So can I just clarify something, Madam Mayor?
Yes, certainly councillor.
Um, is that not the gist of option three, where, you know, it's left to us in the first sentence, it says identify the amount of sponsorship? So is that not left to identify the amount of sponsorship? So we can say, for example, $25,000 and then option three allows the, the details of sets of the sponsorship to be delegated to the staff to negotiate?
Through the CEO, that is correct.
That's correct.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes, you've got your hand up.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was wondering if, um, if, if I could ask a question about the current motion.
Yes, certainly.
I, I believe that, um, you can combine, you don't need to say option one, uh, package for sponsorship of $25,000 excluding GST. But you could say that, uh, more along the lines of option three and, uh, still allocate a, a dollar ceiling to, you know, to start that negotiation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Now, I've got lots of hands up here. Councillor Caliander, have you had your turn?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, no.
You have another question?
Uh, question, but also, um, like a bit of a concern. I know in, on page, uh, 109, um, in the report, it says, it's noted that the $20,000 paid by Camden Council gives them similar outcomes that Macarthur FC have offered to Liverpool City Council for $50,000. Um, my concern is that should we endorse package one as it stands without kind of delegating to staff to, to further negotiate? We actually lock ourselves into a poorer deal than other councils have. Can, can someone?
Okay, I'll ask the CEO.
Um, I'm, I'm not quite clear on your question, councillor Caliander.
Um, my question's more around, um, you know, part of the report notes that, um, the, the, the passages that have been offered may not necessarily be the best bang for buck. So, um, can, can staff sort of ex- expand a little bit, um, on, on that point? And, uh, and how we may be able to cut, work around that?
Well, a- a- again, I suppose that, that leads us to the, the option of being able to negotiate something that is, uh, that will give us the best bang for our buck. In terms of the actual discussions that I've had, I'll refer to Mrs. Bono.
Thank you, uh, through the CEO, um, the flexibility in option three will allow us to have those conversations and provide a better aligned outcome for council. So, um, and that's why we noted the Camden proposal where it was a, a better alignment to, to their outcomes and a better outcome in terms of their, their, their sponsorship arrangement. So, um, that's the, uh, that's, that's a recommended way forward in terms of our conversations, preliminary conversations with Macarthur FC and, and, um, in terms of align the better, to, to the better outcomes of council and a better, uh, uh, a, a better package. Um, and that, and option three allows for that flexibility to occur.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Haggerty, did you wish to speak for the motion?
No, Mayor, sorry. Am I going blind, but I can't see option three anywhere in my report. Sorry, unless I'm going really.
Page 105.
Page 105. Thank you. Thanks. Now I'm good, Mayor.
Good, good. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers against the motion?
Uh, yeah, Madam Mayor, through you, uh, option three again sounds good to me, but it doesn't have a dollar value. Does that mean it could range from 25 to 50 to 60 to 70,000? Can someone just clarify that, please?
Well, it's asking us to specify the amount.
So we should just say option three, 25,000.
As the second, I'd be happy with that.
Okay, thank you. We're just told.
Uh, can, can I get an answer, Madam Mayor, on that, uh, option three? I mean, I'm in.
I'll ask the CEO to answer the question, councillor Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd refer councillor Bullock to page 110. At the very bottom of the page, it specifies that council identify either the $25,000 or $50,000 as the amount of sponsorship it wishes to provide from general revenue. And then goes on to put, uh, further detail to that around tailoring the actual package.
But thank you, CEO. Yep, I've got that. Thank you. Then I think pack option three sounds pretty flexible to me.
Thank you. Councillor, would you like your right of reply?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So, um, with regard to what my fellow councillors have said, I'm happy to change number one to place option three on public exhibition for 28 days, but I do want this capped at $25,000.
That's fine, thank you.
So, and then also it's still, even though, um, staff will be negotiating, it's still subject to the letter of support for a stadium. So basically.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, thank you, Madam. I'm happy with that.
Thank you for that. You've had your right of reply. I would like, um, George to put the voting thing up, please. Councillor Ayad's voting for, I would gather.
Um, can I have a clarification, please?
Sorry councillor, what's the problem councillor Rhodes?
I'm just worried about, is that still appropriate as shown on page 105 of the agenda? Because we've changed it.
It's saying.
Option three.
The sponsorship of $25,000.
Is it still on page 105 of the agenda? It's just a simple question.
I'll ask the CEO for clarification.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The, uh, reference on page 105 to option three is part of the recommendations where we just set them out for simplicity. Um, the more detailed version of, of that is in the report itself and is fully articulated on page 110. Essentially are the same thing.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back. We've got councillor Bullock, councillor Haggerty.
For, Mayor.
Councillor, uh, deputy mayor councillor Did.
For.
Councillor Hagerty.
For.
Councillor Hall.
For.
Councillor Caliander.
For, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Khanib.
For.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes.
Yep, for.
Councillor Shelton.
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Clerk of Carry, thank you very much.
Can we report that as unanimous?
Yes, certainly. Next item is conflict of interest policy on page 112.
Exactly, thank you, Madam Mayor.
One simple question before we move it, Madam Mayor.
Second it, Madam Mayor.
Well, it's been moved by councillor Shelton and seconded by councillor Did. What is your question councillor Rhodes?
A policy this time?
Yes, it's a policy.
Because the last one was entitled to policy as well. And then we were told that it's not actually a policy. I just want clarification.
I'll ask the CEO, councillor.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, the previous policy was being rescinded, um, and in line with our, uh, new framework. It was redefined then as a standard.
um and in line with our uh new framework. It was redefined then as a standard rather than a policy. Uh the policy in that referred to the original status that was uh granted. Uh this one as a policy.
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the declaratary carry. Next item's on page one three three.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton, seconded.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the declaratary carried. Next item is on page one four two.
Move that way.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Haggerty, seconded by councillor Caliander. Any opposition? None, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the declaratary carried. Next item's on one four seven.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Want to make a motion councillor?
That council receives and notes this report. The report and further statistics be reported to workshop to review the D C P and L E P and BACIC review, revision. And that air quality at all major traffic routes through Liverpool be included in the air monitoring programme.
Thank you, we've got a second up?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall, do you wish to speak to your motion councillor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I appreciate all that council is doing and particularly with the uh with the monitoring to be around facilities such as the uh, the area, the, the, those types of industries that we are possible high pollutant, polluting, polluting uh industries. But um I think that we need to look at that in review of our D C P, L E P and BACICS, which I believe we, we may be able to do in the new year. And I also would like that the uh, the quality of air be monitored at traffic routes throughout the Liverpool L G A, the major traffic routes. Um so that we have a base figure of what it is now, so that we can monitor it to see if it is improving or going down.
Thank you councillor. Have we got anybody wishes to speak against?
I've got a question when you're ready, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead councillor Shelton.
Yeah, I'm not specifically against the motion, but I'm just wondering whether somebody can address the question of cost in relation to this. I know that councillor Rhodes has changed traffic routes to major traffic routes, but there's still some room for interpretation as to how many traffic routes and how frequently on those traffic routes these monitoring stations are going to appear and what the likely cost of it is. As I said, I'm not specifically against it, but I'm just queering whether somebody can address the likely cost in relation to as much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll um through the CEO.
Um I'll ask Mr Aitor, uh if he can share something I don't know. Uh through the CEO, thank you councillor Shelton for that question. So the, the proposal that is in the, in the report is for uh a four monitoring stations which will be monitored over a period of three months. The cost of that is fifty thousand dollars. So uh we will, I suppose, the, the, the recommendation of the motion that is being moved needs to give us a bit more clarity about the period and the number of stations so that we can then cost it and, and come back to council. Or coun- or we could actually have a look at those sites that are potentially uh, 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 known for higher levels of air pollution, then we could come back with a proposal to council. But the, to answer the question, it is fifty thousand dollars uh for the four stations over a period of three months. Thank you.
So I have trouble reconciling four stations in the L G A with what the motion presently says, which is all major traffic routes.
Yeah.
Madam, perhaps I can take councillor Shelton's motion uh, uh, um very wise, very wise words into consideration. And that the third, third point gets changed to the council prepare a report on costing some possibility of monitoring air quality changes at all major traffic routes through Liverpool in an ongoing air monitoring programme. How about that? Would that cover it?
Um, well, I think yes, I think what you're doing is picking up on the sentiment. So, uh yeah, that's it, that's good. That's a good idea. And yeah, thank you.
Built into a programme, move it forward.
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you very much. Is there any opposition?
Yeah, I'm opposed. Um.
Thank you, would you like to speak?
Yeah, it's just a bit of a, it's what the, the motion that's being put forward is a bit of a sort of, it's circular. It, you know, this report's come to us because we've put up a motion about air quality. We get the report back and now we're putting up a motion about a report on air quality. Oh, I just, I find it all a bit confusing. Um so I obviously appreciate that Liverpool has uh some of the, you know, regularly comes up with the worst air quality in New South Wales, if not Sydney. Um uh we, and that's only going to get worse when um the, the U T model arrives and um the geniuses uh decide to truck fuel out to the airport rather than build a fuel line. Um but yeah, I, I just, I can't support the motion in its current state, sorry.
Thank you. We have got any other speakers for the motion? None, would you like your right of reply councillor Rhodes?
Uh yes, I would, Madam Mayor. Um I appreciate councillor Haggerty's uh advice. Um but I do believe that uh we have got the report and we are doing some good things. I don't think that by suggesting other things that we know that should be done, it's um important for uh council and Liverpool residents to be aware of the changes in our community and uh i- if that is having an impact on our uh air quality. It gives us the opportunity to uh perhaps make changes uh when we come time to review the D C P, L E P and BACICS, it all ties in together. So I don't see anything wrong with this motion as put. Um it is uh definitely addressing a need for Liverpool. So I do ask all councillors to vote for it.
Thank you very much. Um George, could you put up the voting sheet, please? Thank you. Councillor Ayers, are you for or against?
Madam Mayor, I'm against.
Thank you. Councillor Bulut?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor, I can't even read the writing. Councillor Triddy?
Against, Mary.
Deputy Mayor Haddid?
Against.
Councillor Haggerty?
Against, is it too late to foreshadow?
No, you can uh do that straight after this. Councillor Haggerty against, uh councillor Hall?
For.
For. Councillor Caliander?
Against, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Khanib?
Against, the mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
Obviously for, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shelton?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I declare it lost. To foreshadow motion councillor Ch- uh Haggerty?
Uh as per the book.
As per the book. His seconding?
I'll sit councillor Bulut.
Thank you councillor Bulut, seconding. Any discussion? I'll put it, if you could put the sheet up, please, George. Councillor Ayers?
Madam Mayor, I'm also against.
Okay. Councillor Bulut?
For.
Thank you councillor Triddy.
For.
Councillor Did, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Haggerty?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Khanib?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes? Councillor Shelton?
And.
For, thank you for that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Rhodes?
For.
Thank you, declaratary carry. Thank you. Next items, committee reports are commencing on page.
Now, Mary, can I pull out traffic, please?
Yep. So moved by councillor Did, seconded by.
Can I pull out the uh environment advisory committee? And the strategic panel making.
Okay, there's two committees that we're moving, moved by councillor Did and seconded by.
Happy to, to move.
Councillor Hall, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the declaratary carry. First item is committee one on page one five three. It's the environment one councillor Rhodes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um just two points that I want to bring council, councillors' attention to is that the uh, the waste to energy item in that particular um report that we just passed, or that uh is up before us now, um could, could we add a motion in that council prepare a report on other councils' various methods of waste to energy initiatives and report back to the committee?
Do you want to report it back to a strategic panel or to the committee councillor?
Um. Yes, I'm sorry, that's the strategic uh panel one.
Panel. Can I, can I suggest what you do is you um have a, a last point in the minutes that the, that uh, the council staff prepare a report on what is happening at other councils regards to waste um waste conversion and that be presented at a strategic panel.
Okay.
You can always come back up at an environmental advisory committee, but they did discuss that, as you know, so I know what you're trying to achieve, so um I suggest you do that.
All right. And a further one, um the governance and internal controls over local infrastru- infrastructure contributions, um councillors recently made recommendations into unprecedented areas, I believe, with major long-term projects, some going over thirty and forty years. That are the more point. And it involves the delivery of infrastructure and development contributions and the risks of such projects have not really been addressed by this council that I know of. And I would like that matter to be directed to the ARI committee uh and the steering, uh contribution steering committee for councillor advice.
I will ask advice from the CEO on that matter.
Okay.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um in terms of the, the contributions gap, there's been, we've, we've briefed councillors recently on that. I'm happy to bring back further information on that. And I'll ask Mr Smith uh to add some more detail to that, please.
Certainly, through the CEO, um we can, we can, and we have, um briefed Eric on the contributions matters. It's a a key risk that's identified in council's risk register uh to deal with contributions, gap funding um in pretty much all matters of contributions. So absolutely, we can, we can do that.
Do you believe that should also be before the strategic panel?
Through the CEO, we can certainly do that as well. So we've briefed the strategic panel on a range of contribution matters and we can continue to do so, including matters.
And um I, I suppose we'll get the Eric advice through their um committee meeting minutes? Yes.
No.
Okay. Um just then, Madam Mayor, um the now this one is the environment advisory committee meeting, held on the nineteenth of October. The Wild Deer Management, um I would like to propose a motion that council defer decisions on supporting the Wild Deer Management Programme until it can be confirmed how many deer there are in the Liverpool L G A.
So that becomes a point three.
And that one is directly uh data to the environment advisory committee.
I imagine you need a point four that council receives and notes the minutes as well.
That's what I was going to say, thanks, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome councillor Shelton. Notes, sees and notes the minutes, yeah, of the environmental advisory committee held on the nineteenth of October. All right, um second up?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall. Would you like to speak to your motion councillor?
Well, Madam Mayor, I won't uh speak to the methods of waste to energy initiatives. I think that's pretty clear to everybody. Um that uh if there is other councils that are doing s- uh stuff, that uh it would be very helpful for council councillors to know exactly what they're doing, uh because there are different methods being engaged by different councils. So that one's relatively self-explanatory. The deer, the Wild Deer Management Programme. I, I feel that council needs to consider the, if possible, funding is paying for other L G As who have a greater need of this service than perhaps Liverpool may have. Um at the address by Mr Parker at the E A C meeting, he had no figures on the actual numbers that may be in the Liverpool L G A. Um but conceded that there would be that they would expect there to be greater numbers in other less developed L G As than Liverpool. So on, on the basis of that information, I just feel that it would be ve- very prudent for council to find out exactly uh how many uh deer are in the Liverpool L G A before we start spending ratepayers money uh trying to track them down and kill them. So uh that's the basis of that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Through the CEO, Mr Paisley has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr Paisley? Tim, you're on mute. Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, I can't speak for Tim, but I would imagine um he would like to comment on the wording of the council motion. Uh you recall that we committed uh further to the initial review of the project twenty four initiative, that we would look at um bringing further information back to council, uh which would be informed by state governments uh twenty year strategy, which is due uh fairly shortly. Um and I'll see if Mr Paisley is now available. If he's not, then I would suggest, Madam Mayor, that um we don't restrict the wording of the motion to other councils' various methods of waste to energy initiatives. I think we keep it um broader than that and look at best practice.
Okay. Councillor Rhodes, are you happy if we change it to best practice from other councils?
Yes, happy, happy with that.
Okay. And then just, and, and that be reported back to the strategic panel. Okay, thank you. Um councillor Shelton, you have your hand up?
Yes, just a comment, thank you, Madam Mayor. The motion that was passed by the environmental advisory committee as set out on page one hundred and fifty eight of the papers, uh was strongly supported by the committee. And that motion was that committee recommends that council support and participate with the Greater Sydney Local Land Services, which is basically running its own show anyway, in the Wild Deer Management Programme. There was one person who got her name, reported as voting against, uh but the overall flavor of the meeting was supportive in relation to the actions of the land council. And I'll just pass that on, thank you.
Thank you for that information councillor. Okay, are there any other speakers? Against? Any other speakers for?
Madam Mayor, in reflection to councillor uh Shelton's comments, uh defer the decision on supporting the Wild Deer Management Programme and take it back to the E A C committee for further discussion.
Okay, so refer, refer the Wild Deer Management Programme back to the committee, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. For further discuss- Okay. For further discussion.
For further discussion.
Okay, all right. Happy to amend that. Is the seconder happy for that amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to put it, if you could put, George, could you put up the writing sheet? You might have to make the names bigger. Thank you. Councillor, are you for or against this?
I'm for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Baloot. I'll come back. Councillor Hachidi?
For, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hiddit?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Caliander?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Kani?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shelton?
You nearly got me there councillor Rhodes, but no, I'm sorry, I'm against.
Okay, thank you. The motion is carried. The next items on the next, is committee O3, the Liverpool Pedestrian Active Transport and Traffic Committee.
Mayor, I'll move that with one extra point and then I'll speak to it if possible. And I've sent that through.
Certainly. Yep, go for it.
And the one point is for a treatment or a plan for a treatment to the pedestrian access or crossing outside of Brighton Lakes Golf Club. There's currently a roundabout there. On a couple of times, yes, I have sent it through and it keeps coming back that it's not dangerous or there's no scope or there's no room for something. Sorry, that's supposed to ensures a safer crossing route, that bottom one. It always comes back as it can't be done. It's a dangerous intersection. After a few sherbys where people don't want to drive and they actually want to walk home, it's very dangerous, even during peak hour. It is a dangerous intersection. And I think we need to now find a solution instead of not finding one. And that's what that says. Consult with the committee, but come back with what we can do, not what we can't do. Thanks, Mayor.
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Didd. Seconded? We got anybody that wishes to speak against this? Councillor Shelton, you have your hand up? Hands down, okay.
Yeah, I'll take it down. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. No other speakers for this matter? I'll put it. Any opposition? Cleric Harry. Next item is the O4 minutes of strategic panel meeting.
I'll move them, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I have another motion then, a foreshadowed motion.
Well, just hold on. Councillor Caliander's moving. Seconded?
Councillor Kani?
Thank you, councillor Kani.
My pleasure.
Councillor Caliander, do you wish to talk to your motion?
Oh, no, pretty straightforward, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any opposition?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll speak against the motion.
Go ahead, councillor Rhodes.
I think that I think that this development needs greater consideration. I've got to say that I quite liked the look of the development. And I think that with further negotiation with the proponent around the various issues of density and flood mitigation and the other issues that were raised. I believe that this development is still worthy of council's endorsement. I also feel that there is an opportunity by collaborating with all of the developments in that particular area and possibly Bankstown Council and the state government to look at the inclusion of a bridge crossing across the Georges River. There's a lot of possibilities that could be in this particular development. I also feel that because it's got the bushland all around it and the river on the other side, it's probably about the one of the best developments that has covered the issue of heat sinking.
Councillor, I think we're on the strategic panel meeting.
I thought we'd dealt with that, Madam Mayor.
No, we're on the strategic planning meeting.
All right, okay. What is the number of the item that we're talking about?
Committee O4?
Committee O4.
Yeah, page two. Thank you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, cleric Harry. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is two hundred and sixteen, questions with notice, in the name of councillor Ayed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a question regarding this.
Yes, certainly.
Does council usually follow people's comments on social media? Or is it only because this particular individual happens to be the former mayor of Liverpool that they're following him and taking into consideration what he posts?
I'll ask the acting, sorry, CEO for comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In this particular case, there was clearly a general trend in support of the consultation. And where a spike, a significant spike, such as occurred after the actual consultation date closed, where you have that significant spike, it leads to the questions of why is that pattern occurring? What does it mean? And then trying to further, then trying to undertake further investigation as to why it might have occurred. It became clearly a significant issue for members of the public, who then subsequently fed into the responses to that consultation session. And that seems to be the most probable direct explanation as to why that spike occurred when it did. But again, you know, it's not a general thing to, there's always a general monitoring of social media by our communications team to try and pick up general issues.
Okay, and is that only for, if you like, persons of interest?
No.
Persons of interest like the former mayor? Or is that anyone who is a rate payer?
Not at all councillor. It's to do, where there are references to Liverpool, then that tends to be, you know, particular, where there are references to Liverpool, that would be picked up by the media scanning component.
Okay, thank you. Oops, sorry. Any other questions councillor?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to add that this actually made me laugh when I saw the agenda. I found it quite funny, to be honest. That's all really I have to say and that's.
Thank you councillor, I'm glad it's that time of year.
Quite. Only Ned Manoun's post is in there, no one else's, because I'm sure there were many other ratepayers in Liverpool that did post something on social media. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor, I appreciate that. Next item's on page two-two-one, under the name of councillor Caliander.
Sorry, I was still on mute. That's fine. Thank you very much to staff for providing that response.
Wonderful. Next item is also in your name and it's on page two thirty-one.
Also fine, I'm happy with the response. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, next item is in your addendum booklet and it's on page five.
Can we have a nom, Madam Mayor?
Sorry?
Oh, sorry.
Addendum booklet on page number five.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this was the one that I jumped over a page to, so I apologise to everyone.
Okay. You were just keen to get the meeting moving.
No, I'm keen to get the meeting over, Madam Mayor. I'm going, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Yes, I would like to propose a motion for this particular.
What is your motion?
That council receive a note this report. One, two, council continue to negotiate with the proponent around issues of density flood mitigation. And I believe we would have to include and note the correspondence from the Department of Planning and Industry Environment about the flood, regional flood evacuation study. And they're really encouraging us that these developments should be collaborating together. So that would be a repeat of number three, there it is up. And investigate the opportunities, number four, to collaborate with neighbouring developments, Bankstown Council and the state government for the possible inclusion of a bridge across the Georges River. And the last one is defer a decision on whether to forward this planning proposal request to the Department of Planning and Industry for gateway determination until the regional flood study and a further report to council regarding issue two above has been completed in March or April next year.
I'll foreshadow, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll have a second of the councillor Rhodes's motion.
Happy to second, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you councillor Chitty.
Mayor, if I can, at this point, in point number four of councillor Rhodes, with that there, can that be at a point where maybe we know that there is merit in this instead of doing all the work and then people spending money and time and everything else? So get them to sort out all the other issues first before we start talking about that.
I think what I might do is ask the CEO to ask the appropriate staff member to make a comment on the actual motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll ask Mr Smith.
Thank you. Through the CEO, the recommendation in the book has been put forward, a full assessment of the application has been undertaken by council officers. The current proposal does not exhibit strategic or site-specific merit. That's also been endorsed by the local planning panel. What we have identified in option three, sorry, in point three of the recommendation is that we do invite the proponent to consider the information contained in the planning assessment report and the advice of the Liverpool Local Planning Panel and put forward an amended planning proposal that addresses firstly strategic merit. No proposal can proceed unless it is aligned with the regional district plans, the local strategic planning statement, ministerial directions. Once you get through that hoop, then we need to address the multitude of site constraints in this precinct and on this site specifically.
Thank you very much, Mr Smith. Okay, councillor Hachidi, you have your hand up? Your hands up?
I'll ask a question, I suppose. So to Mr Smith, through your mayor, CEO. The council officer's recommendation is inviting them to look at different things and this is just deferring it and inviting them to look at things. I think we're all in agreeance that there's still some issues here, but does it really matter if it's deferred or if it's start all over again?
I'll ask the CEO to get someone to comment.
Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor. And through the CEO, there's absolutely nothing wrong with the recommendation put forward by the councillor. It can be deferred for an amended planning proposal. Our recommendation was that we have assessed the current planning proposal and so we were seeking a decision from council that that proposal is not supported. But an amended planning proposal that addresses the issues that are identified in the planning officers' report and through the advice of the local planning panel be brought forward.
Can I keep going for a sec, Mayor?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Now, I understand the position and I thank you for the briefing the other day with Mr Ostie that was in there as well. Why can't we give clear direction on what we think may or may not work? I still don't get it that as a council, when we see a plan, we just say, no, this doesn't work, give us another one. Now, that can happen thirty, forty, fifty times. Why can't we just give clear direction and advice on what we think may work and then use that as a starting point?
Mr Smith?
That's exactly what we try to do. So when a proponent puts forward, it's different in this case because this isn't a council-initiated planning proposal. The developer put forward what they wanted to see on that site. So our job is to then assess that proposal that they've put forward. What we have said to them is we're happy to work with them. And this report was obviously brought to council in December from a previous resolution of council that required it to be reported to council by December. Ordinarily, I would prefer to work through the issues once our assessment is finalised, once the local planning panel has made their determination, to see what other opportunities there are available on that site. But that obviously needs the proponent to consider their situation and their circumstances. They own the site. They've put forward a planning proposal, but of course, we're happy to work with them on what it is that they're wanting to do to determine whether or not it meets strategic merit firstly and then secondly, whether it meets site-specific merit.
So, sorry, Mayor, if you don't mind. Do any of our documents, LSPS or any other document, refer this to a site that could meet those site-specific or tick those boxes?
Through the CEO, the LSPS identifies this as an investigation area for urban development. So there is, as identified in the report, an element of strategic support for some sort of development on that site. We just need to work with the proponent to ensure that what is ultimately proposed meets also the regional plan and the district plan. Because this is an out-of-centre location and the significant density proposed, no public transport available in this precinct. Transport for New South Wales has raised concerns, as has officers in the local planning panel. In answer to your question, there is an element of strategic support within council's local strategic planning statement.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Ayed. Did you wish to speak for or against the motion or ask a question?
Madam Mayor, I'm for the motion, but I did just want to ask the mover and the seconder if they'd be happy to add another point. Just with a boardwalk there along the river, I really think that needs to be reconsidered. The design and construction of a boardwalk needs to be reconsidered as part of a river revitalisation plan or vision, if you like. I mean, that can be the new bay run, you know, of the south west. Or even, I had in my mind, something similar to the walk at Breakfast Point and around Cabarita. I don't know if any of the councillors have been there, but it's actually a really nice walk. And people actually walk around and what they do, they walk to the local cafe, grab a coffee and then kind of walk back. And I think that's something that we're missing. And I mean, the river's there, we need to utilise that area. So I would love for that to be added as a point six.
So your question is, could we have another point that looks at a possibility of a boardwalk along the Georges River?
Yeah.
And that will be, and seconder happy with that?
I've got no issue, but I thought that would be given with any development along the river. So, yeah, no issue.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be sure that that's included. And I think with that, it also needs to be suggested to all the property owners and proponents that have put in DA, I mean, along the river, because I believe it'd be more than one that has to contribute to that and it'd be an overall vision where they'd have to kind of design and implement together along with council.
Well, I think you've already heard from the council staff member who said they're basically still negotiating, so I'm sure they'll take those comments on board. Thank you for that councillor Ayed. Councillor Hagerty, are you speaking against the motion?
No, I was just going to withdraw my foreshadowed now.
Okay.
But isn't there already a strategic, some kind of strategic plan or document to basically walk the length of the Georges River through the LGA? Eventually, so even the river crossings and boardwalks and other.
I'll ask the CEO for the.
Correct, councillor. Okay, so, okay, yeah, so I guess point six is already sort of in there, but yeah. Okay, so, okay, yeah, so I guess point six has already sort of been there, but yeah, if we, if we put that in there, that's fine. Um, one more thing, um, it seems to have dropped off, but in the recommendation in the papers, we noted the advice of the Liverpool, uh, the local planning panel and we haven't done that here. Is there, uh, do we need to, um, would the mover and second take that on board if, um, the council staff felt it appropriate or is it? Yeah.
Through the CEO, I'll ask the, um, person, the council person, to make a comment on that, whether it needs to be included.
Um, my view would be, Madam Mayor, that it is implicit within point one.
Yep.
Um, where you say receive and note this report. The report includes, uh, we pull up, if we scroll up, uh, it includes reference to note the advice of the local, Liverpool local planning panel. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, we've had speakers for, almost speakers against, um, is there any opposition to this motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor Hall?
I have a comment on that, that may change people's minds. The last point was to put a boardwalk along there. Boardwalks are generally not put along flood-prone areas like our Georges River. And that's one reason why we couldn't put it at the Shepherd Street, uh, complex, if you remember. And I, and I, what councillor Ayad was referring to, those boardwalks are usually entitled areas or areas where you do not get flooding and the water level remains reasonably constant. Just be aware of that, you may not be able to do this.
Should we change the word boardwalk to shared path?
Or could we just put in the word consider, design and construction?
Well, may, may I suggest, given none of us are planners, that we may be asked in planners what we should be putting, uh, through the CEO?
Madam Mayor, thank you, may be a question for, uh, Mr Otar on the engineering side.
Sorry.
Uh, through the CEO, uh, I think the, uh, uh, having, having a recommendation that says, uh, uh, consider, uh, options, I guess, to provide, uh, a fully accessible, uh, shared path or pathway that, that, that allows the design team to, to look at various options, whether it is a shared path, uh, above ground or, or, or even a boardwalk where some places may, uh, may, may be suitable for it. So we just need flexibility, I guess. Uh, but noting also that this is, at this stage, a, a planning proposal, it will go through a process of various investigations in design to get that, uh, I guess, the vision that, uh, our CEO talked about earlier, which is covered in the master plan for Georges River. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any opposition to this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councillor.
May, I'm not opposed, I just want to know, is this going to come back to us in April? Did, is that what the, uh, outlined? Sorry, I can't see it on my screen.
It said, and further report to council regarding issues raised and that have been completed in, by April twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam.
So I would read that that will be another report coming back to council on it.
Thank you.
Okay, is, is there any opposition? I'm just trying to save George, have to put up everything, this one has to be everybody's name. So this one's unanimous for the typist. Thank you. The next item is on page, um, nine five one of your addenda book. And can I draw council, councillors' attention to a memo from Mr Smith?
Happy to move the memo, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, what's your question, councillor Chitty?
Uh, through yourself to the CEO. It, it says in that to bring it back to us. Is, is there a way where we can say, okay, this looks good now? If the flood report doesn't say anything, just send it off so we're not getting another three thousand pages?
Through the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll confirm that through Mr Smith.
Yes, thank you, through the CEO, absolutely, the council can choose to delegate the authority to the CEO to finalise the preparation of a planning proposal once one to three, effectively two and three have been, um, finalised. So it doesn't have to come back to council and it can be referred to the Department of Planning, uh, for a gateway determination. Uh, as you'll recall, it's already been to the local planning panel. Uh, so there is no need, if council doesn't wish for it to have to come back to council. Of course, if there are significant changes as a result of that, um, we would use our discretion and put up the council decision.
Thank you, may I, can I just change that to read, unless there's anything drastic that we endorse this, we give it to the CEO, delegate to him to send it off to Gateway, just so we're just getting another report for something we've already seen?
Okay, thank you. See the second up?
Happy to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hall. So we've got the motion receiver note, notes, da-da-da-da-da-da, defer decision, da-da-da-da-da. And a point four that delegate the CEO to refer this to Gateway on satisfactory completion of all issues. Outstanding issues. Okay, uh, any opposition? I'm going to say that this is unanimous, thank you.
So.
Yep.
Just on that one, in point three, we've got defer a decision.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, no, no, uh, defer a decision on whether to forward or deny it or do it. I'll just, just take it out, I'd say. Just take three out and four becomes three. That way the CEO does the, um, the judgement on satisfactory outcomes.
If that's what.
Okay, thank you for that. There's no opposition, so I'm declaring it unanimous. Next item in your addenda book is Corp O three and it's on page one four seven six.
May I refer, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Second. Who was, uh, councillor?
Yeah.
Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Presentations by councillors, any presentations? Okay, next item is page two, three, four in your normal agenda book and it's local and regional planning panels in the name of councillor Rhodes. Oh, no, it's not, that's a bit.
Councillor Hagerty.
Sorry, I missed a page, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, uh, yeah, look, this one's straightforward. Um, the local planning panel normally meets on, um, a, a Monday at two o'clock, um, which for a couple of reasons is very inconvenient. Uh, the first being it's on a weekday during work time and the second being it's during school, yeah, during school pickup time. So, uh, for a lot of, um, residents that want to raise concerns or even speak in support of a development, they find it very difficult to make this meeting. Um, and likewise, the, the Sid- uh, South West Planning Panel, uh, Sydney, Western Sydney, whatever it's called, Planning Panel, um, meets during the daytime. Now, I know we can't direct them, but we can certainly write to them on behalf of our residents. Um, eh, almost without fail, maybe once every month or once every couple of months, someone, uh, a bunch of residents, um, are frustrated by the fact that they're unable to speak at this and, you know, they'll normally get a resident to speak on their upper half, but they would much, much more prefer to actually be there in person and if, if, if they want to, put their hand up and speak. So it's important that the community, uh, have their say about the kind of development that goes on in their neighbourhoods and their community and that's what this is about, so I'd, I'd think everyone would want to support that. Thank you.
Happy to second.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Doot. Is any opposition? I'll put it, those.
Yes. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, go for it, councillor Hall.
Uh, just, just one point on this. I don't believe you'll find a suitable time that suits everybody. We've gone through this so many times before. Uh, weekends are not necessarily any, any good for people either. Having an after hours, uh, remember that a panel that looks at this, that you get the public input first and then you have to get the panel to decide on the outcome of that. If they're going to be doing this at night time, the panel members won't get home before midnight. So you've got the same problem. I don't think there's an answer to it. I think leave the status quo. If people are concerned about this to the point that they need to have a say, they will come there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Hall. Anybody else wishes to speak for the motion? Any other speakers against? Do you wish your right to reply, councillor Hagerty?
Madam Mayor?
No, all good.
Speak against the motion, if I may.
Well, I've just called the writer reply, so no, I'm sorry.
I didn't get.
Okay, so. Okay, so those that are against the motion, please, um, put up the shirt, please, George. Okay, councillor Ayad?
I'm against.
Against councillor Balut? Councillor Chitty?
For.
Deputy Mayor Adid?
For.
Councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor Hall?
Sorry, against.
I would imagine.
Sorry, against.
That's okay, um, councillor Caliendo?
For, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Canib?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Rhodes?
I agree with Peter, against.
Thank you. Councillor Shelton?
It's close, but four.
Okay. Um, I declare the ma- the matter carried. Next item is in the name of councillor, I've got it right this time, councillor Rhodes. On page two thirty-five.
That would be me, Madam Mayor. Look, uh, I thank, uh, council for their additional information on this motion and, uh, I am appreciative of the fact that, uh, Liverpool council assisted and contributed to the preparation of the toolkit. But, uh, simply this motion is about how we can use it as a councillor, as a council and how councillors can take it on board and utilise the information in it and, uh, integrate the urban heat planning mitigation into Liverpool's councils, LEP, DCPs, and I think BASSIC, BASSIC should be in there as well on number B. Um, so, you know, we're, it's, it's interesting that the, um, the, uh, minister announced his desire to redress BASSICs in order to deliver more Liverpool communities. Councillors, you know, all councillors at this, this, this council have been stating for quite some time, as well as the council planners themselves, that there are things that we can do, uh, that can make differences. And there's never been a better time, now that the minister is interested in redressing BASSICs, for us to go ahead and to do this. Um, but we're not going to be able to do it alone. And, uh, we are going to need the support of, uh, our fellow councils in neighbouring areas, uh, to engage in a joint submission to DPIE and, uh, call for the revision of BASSICs and we have to have the ideas to submit of what we would like to see in it. So that is the basic purpose around this particular motion. I may not have, uh, worded it in the most appropriate manner, but, um, the intention is very clear, this is an opportunity for council and, uh, uh, it's something that councillors would like to engage in. And, uh, I think that the workshop would give us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes, do we have a second up?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Any speakers against?
I'll just speak against because.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Hagerty.
I'm, uh, happy to support it. Um, my issue, um, is, uh, when we've previously held councillor workshops on single item issues, I think the attendance has been, uh, poor, um, uh, poorer than it normally is. Um, you know, it'd be great if all councillors turned up to briefings and, and workshops, unfortunately, that's rarely the case. Um, so in order to, I guess, get a, get a better outcome here, councillor Rhodes, would, would, would you be open to holding this sort of, uh, you know, as part of a, uh, strategic briefing or, you know, one of, one of the regular meetings, so either a briefing or a stra- whatever that, whatever that strategy meeting's called?
Strategic panel.
That's the one. Um, it's very, very late in the night and very late in the year. Um, uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that as many people as possible councillors get along to this because it's, it is an important issue, so if we held it as part of or either side of, of one of our other meetings, I think that is better to go about it.
What you're, what you're suggesting is incorporate this topic into a council strategic panel meeting.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm not.
Before, before April twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm not happy to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, um, I, I appreciate your concern, councillor Hagerty, but I don't think moving it into a strategic panel is going to make one ounce of difference to the attendance that you're talking about. I think that I can only really stress how important it is for councillors to engage in this and for them to really turn up to a specific workshop where we're specifically talking about this particular issue, because it does need our attention. We need to do this for the residents and the constituents in Liverpool. And, uh, for that reason, I don't think we'd be doing it justice by putting it into a strategic planning panel. And I don't think that by doing that, you're going to make one ounce of difference as to who turns up. So, I'm sorry, uh, councillor, I'd love.
Thank you, councillor, I'm gonna ca- I'm gonna call that your, um, right of reply. Um, basically because you've already spoken and you've now been able to address the issues raised by councillor Hagerty. Okay, I'm gonna put it to the vote, George, can you put up the, um, sheet, please? All right, councillor Ayad?
Madam Mayor, you'll have to excuse me, I really don't know what we're voting on, my children are all over me.
Okay, well, what we're talking about is a workshop to deal with particularly with heat and the way it affects our buildings and our environment, I would suggest.
We're on norm O two.
We're on norm O two, yep.
Okay, can I just have a minute just to read what's before us and then?
Well, I'll keep going and I'll come back to you. Councillor Balut? Councillor Balut? Councillor Chitty?
For.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Adid?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hagerty?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Canib?
For.
Councillor Caliendo? Councillor Caliendo?
For, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shelton?
For, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I know that we have people on the list that haven't said anything, but the numbers have it, so it's been, um, carried. We're gonna have a ten-minute break and we will be back at. We're gonna have a ten-minute break and we will be back at. On the list that councillors wish to deal with in confidence, close session.
To me, if that's okay.
O six and O seven?
Please.
Okay. All right, well, we'll close it at that point. So the first item is conf O one on page three seven six.
Here's what I think, madam mayor.
Seconded, madam mayor.
Move councillor Sheldon and seconded councillor Adid. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clear carried. The next item is on page three eighty.
Move it, madam mayor.
Oh, sorry, madam mayor, I should also, um, have declared an interest in this one for the same reason as, um.
Everybody else.
Yeah, uh, same reason as the previous one. I serve on the same board, so I'll just add that to the list.
All right. So move by councillor Adid, seconded by.
Sorry, happily seconded.
Thank you councillor Hall. Any opposition?
Madam mayor, I have a, a alteration or a full shutout motion.
Well, the motion is actually on the books. It's been moved and seconded, so you'll have to, uh, if your amendment to the motion is, um, acceptable to the movement, second up, that would be fine. Um, but it better not, it can't breach the confidence, okay?
No, no, I won't, madam mayor. I'll be very careful. Look, madam mayor, I would just like the mover and the seconder to consider that, um, we, uh, change the number of community representatives, uh, on the charter for maximum twenty community representatives. That would be accepting all people who applied, plus the two existing members. Uh, I'd also suggest that we live in a quorum as it currently stands. Now, the reason why, should I talk now about that, madam mayor? The reason why I think this would be a, uh, a better thing for us to do is because in the past four years, the biggest issue was in achieving a quorum for all meetings. Uh, and obviously the community members, and it's great to see so many people put their hands up, but they're not always going to be available to attend the meeting. Um, the quorum should remain the same because it's no point in putting the quorum up, um, as, it, it only stops meetings from proceedings and the committee only makes recommendations that then have to be passed by council anyway. But if we have a quorum, it gives the members ample opportunity who were not there, uh, and possibly do not agree with the recommendation to have their say, if not present, and for the matter to then be addressed at the council meeting. But the additional people would contribute a more diverse number of ideas and assist the growth of our visitor, the economy and the CBD. Um, if experience counts, we can expect definitely not all members to turn up to this meeting. Uh, I've been on this particular committee since it was first, um, uh, put together and, uh, it has been a struggle. And a lot of that is because the very important people have very busy hopes and sometimes they're just not available. Um, the other thing is the council manages district forum meetings with as many members as this is proposed in this motion. So it is not unreasonable for, uh, for us to accept everybody who apply. And, uh, I, I, I would ask that the mover and seconder of the motion consider, uh, that we do that.
Okay, well, I'll ask councillor, um, Adid and councillor Hall whether they're happy to accept your amendment.
Happy to accept.
Councillor Adid?
Oh, sorry, I don't mind, Ed.
Okay, they're happy to have that adopted into the motion. Thank you. Ow. Okay, so, um, someone like to speak to the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, councillor Hagerty, your hands up. What is your question?
Is there something in the code of meeting practice that sort of says you have to turn up to meetings? People shouldn't be applying to sit on committees if they can't commit to attending them.
I will ask through the CEO, through, um, the appropriate staff member, what happens if people don't turn up to meetings?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, well, the, it is set out within the code of meeting practice that if you fail to attend as a committee member, if you fail to attend without giving an acceptable reason for three consecutive meetings, um, then, uh, you lose your place on that committee.
Okay, so, and I note councillor Rhodes's comment about the district forum. The district forums are, I guess, forums, they're sort of consultative, community forums, where this is a committee of council. Um, and she also made the point that we, I think we're probably close to half a dozen cracks at this committee in one way or another trying to make it work and get quorum and folding it into other committees. Do we, do we need to look at perhaps dissolving this as a committee and just making it a forum? Just putting that out.
Okay, can I speak for the motion then, madam mayor?
Yes, you can speak for the motion councillor.
All right, the reason why I don't believe that we should make it a forum, I think that this committee is getting better and better. I believe that the council staff do a remarkable job with this committee meeting and that makes no difference to them whether they're, uh, presenting what they've got to present to eight people or ten people or twenty people. But what you will find is that the people that we have down who have accepted and have every intention of turning up to these meetings, and we only have them, what is it, every second month, madam mayor? Um, I believe it is only every second month, so you've only got six, so you can miss three. There were many members that did miss more than three meetings last, um, uh, uh, last, um, last lot of committee member meetings, or members. But, uh, I note that, uh, those people, and there were only, uh, four people that made the quorum, that turned up consistently. And I note that, uh, only two of those people are currently, would be currently included in this particular new committee. Um, and one of them wasn't, uh, put onto the selection list. And I know that that person will turn up to these meetings. And as much as people feel that they want to turn up, you know, it's just held at a busy time in the morning and they have, uh, business commitments that they've got to meet. So, and I'm only speaking from experience to tell you exactly what has happened at this committee over the last five years, four years. So.
Thank you councillor.
Ask for councillors to, um, increase the number of com- community representatives to the maximum number and I think you will find that this committee will work very, very well.
Thank you councillor. Anybody wish to speak against the motion? Nobody? Okay, I'm going to put the motion.
I put my hand up for the questions, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor Adid put.
So the question is, do we need to amend the charter to be able to increase the numbers of the community representatives?
Yeah, that's.
I'll ask the CEO to make comment on that. Thank you councillor. CEO?
Thanks, madam mayor. If I can take that on notice, but my recollection is that there is no limit placed on the number of committee members.
Okay, if you can check, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, who would like to vote? I'll just do it this way because it's probably easier. Who would like to vote against the motion? Please speak up. Nobody? So that I'm going to take is everybody's voting for. Thank you. The next item is on page three nine three.
Happy to move it, madam mayor.
Seconded, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall. And councillor. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the clear carried. Next item's on page three nine seven.
Happy to move that, too.
Happy to second it councillor Rhodes.
Um, thank you councillor Rhodes. Is there any opposition?
No opposition, but can I thank, um, council staff for their work on this one? I was the one that put up the original notice of motion and, um, good to see they're filing through on this one quite quickly. It looks like it may, uh, may bring some very good results, so thank you and keep up the good work.
So you deserve to move it.
I don't care.
Thank you. Okay. Next item's on page four oh seven.
Question, mayor?
Yes councillor.
Through yourself to, probably through the CEO then to George. And I don't think I'm breaking anything here, but there was something raised in State Parliament in relation to parking meters. Are we affected at all? Have you had a chance to look at it and are we affected?
Um.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, Mr Hunturis?
Thank you, uh, through the CEO. Um, I don't believe we are affected. However, I recall, um, reading through the content, um, but I can't recollect the details around that, so it's something I probably need to take on notice and, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any opposition? A mover and a seconder would be useful.
Happy to move it, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Hall, seconded.
I'll second it.
Councillor Rhodes? Is there any opposition? Then I'll deem it unanimous. We now move into confidential.
Forum and don't leave because people want to say Merry Christmas etcetera. So the first motion that was actually moved and seconded in closed session was that the council defer decision on this listing of this property till a further report is presented on other means to ensure the current landowner does not endure any hardship by council's decision. Two, the next item was that council, oops, that council note the council's New South Wales Treasury Court loan applications currently under consideration and waiting approval. Delegate authority to the mayor and the CEO to furnish and complete any required documentation to treasury to facilitate the approval. Delegate authority to the CEO to invite expressions of interest from commercial and financial institutions to lend approximately forty percent of the project costs. Delegate authority to the mayor and CEO to complete and submit and execute any required loan application documents to secure the borrowings from a preferred commercial or financial institution. Authorise use of council's common seal in the loan documents if required. Authorise the CEO to engage in appropriate qualified accounting firm to undertake a comprehensive review of the PDA to identify the financial implications. Endorse the inclusion of a co-living accommodation as part of the development works that live in place. Delegate authority to the CEO to negotiate and execute any changes to the project development agreement and built holdings subject to legal advice and direct the CEO to report any such amendments to the strategic panel once agreed. And keeps confidential the attachments supplied under separate cover pursuant to provisions of section eight two C of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three as information would have disclosed conferred commercial advantage on a person with whom council is conducting business and conducting business. And staff bring back responses to questions raised in post-session by the end of February twenty twenty-one. The meeting, having said that, that was carried and councillor she wanted his name voting against it. At this point I will turn over to the CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of words of thanks on behalf of the executive management team to you and all of our councillors. It's been a very, very difficult year. We thank you for your support, your encouragement and all of your hard work and we wish you a well-deserved break and a very happy, healthy and peaceful new year. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to wish my colleagues a safe and happy Christmas, a new year and unfortunately that virus is still hanging around. There was something on the system, I think yesterday, saying go and get tested, but I'm sure we're pretty resilient and in the fullness of time it will be okay. But I hope all your families are safe and I hope that everything that you wish to happen over the holiday season in a positive way happens and thank you very much for your support in a very difficult year.
Likewise, Madam Mayor.
Mayor, and as a final time as a councillor, Merry Christmas to everyone. To all the staff, I know that we get into heated discussions at time or discussions. I know that we're all in it for the right reason and I thank all staff for all their support and work that they do and have done during the year. And to my fellow councillors, it's been, yeah, it's been another interesting year. Look forward to twenty twenty-one. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else wish?
Yeah, I'd just like to let everyone know that I've continued my tradition of wearing a Christmas themed tie for the December meeting. This is now the fifth year in a row and I have at this time a much more tasteful tie that has lots of little Santas on it. So yes, Merry Christmas, enjoy the break.
I wore a hat.
Excellent.
And I'd like, and I'd like to apologise for my performance on teams today.
Yes, I think you need a new one.
Happy Christmas, everyone.
Yeah, I'll join with everybody.
I wish for everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Sorry, I'm talking to somebody.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Lovely to even briefly see people in their Christmas get up. He is hoping that next year we're able to actually have meetings in Preston again. Although I don't know if everyone agrees with that, but anyway.
Well, we had forty people in, we had forty people in attendance at tonight's meeting, so there you go. How wonderful.
I would just like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and I like robust discussions at council and I look forward to doing it again next year, so thank you.
Well, I'm my calling, I wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year for you and your family. I'm going to see one twenty-two one. God will be.
Thank you.
Likewise, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. May you all enjoy it with your loved ones in happiness and health and hopefully we'll have a twenty twenty-one that's Covid-free and we can get back to, back to normal if anyone knows what normal is anymore. And councillor Hagerty, I'm sorry, I have to disagree, your tie is horrible. I hope everyone has a wonderful, wonderful Christmas.
Good night. I was just saying, it's much, it's much, it's much classier than my previous.